Comments, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council at this time? Moving on to item five, consent agenda and take a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sargen. Questions? Roll call.
Lee.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorach.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Motion carries, I'd like to pay special attention to item 14, accepting the resignation of Jake Schreier, our technology and innovation director. I'll leave it at that Jake, appreciate everything you've done buddy, I know this was a hard one for you and I congratulate you on your new position and I know you're going to do awesome, so thank you, you're tough shoes to fill man. Thanks. Item six, new business, under action item one, new business, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-29 approving Big Creek Technology Campus preliminary plat two.
This is out at the Big Creek Technology Campus, this adds one additional buildable lot on the south side of the street, Cherry Oliver. Whitman representing Knapp Properties is also in attendance, this is fairly simple, straightforward, the city is putting in the road and the city utilities in the area, a contract was let in for that in March of this year, Jerry, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add.
I'd be happy to answer questions if the council had any.
Any other questions?
The only question I have is money's in the budget, we put, we set that aside for the road.
Yep, it is. No questions, I take a motion.
So.
Sargen. Roll call please.
Lee.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorach.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Motion carries. Looking forward to seeing some action out there, thanks guys. Item two, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-20 crossroads at the lake's preliminary plant. Kathy, Gary, I know you guys are.
This is.
Oh, sorry.
Aaron.
Aaron.
I wouldn't want to steal your thunder.
Oh, okay.
It's so nice.
Good evening, Erin O'Leary, civil design advantage, address 3405 Southeast Crouch Drive, street, G and Grimes, here tonight on behalf of Kimberly Properties, this is very similar to what you saw from rezoning, this is the preliminary plat crossroads at the lake, property is located east of the intersection of South Third Street and East Bridge Road, this plan proposes 84 single-family lots, they range in length from 70 to 74 feet, there will be 40 town home lots up in the northwest corner, and then four commercial lots along Southwest Third Street, there is a park area being proposed kind of down through the center of the property, which will contain a trail and a couple of ponds, we have addressed all of Kathleen's comments, I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kathleen.
Yeah, I guess the only one thing I would mention is that the town homes are shown more for reference only because some of the setbacks relate to the building, so when we get a more detailed site plan we'll look at those more closely. Also, we sent out a, had, its staff had met on street names and naming conventions, and I've kind of forwarded that, so we do have some updating to do on street names in accordance with those conventions, but that's really the only outstanding thing.
We will be having a meeting with Erin and the developer, Bill Kimberly, Wednesday, taking a look at phasing and that type of thing, so, and how to work through the bike trail, so, it's been going along very, very well.
Ron, do you want to add anything on P and Z?
No, I just, it went very well, it was a long meeting, everybody did their due diligence as they always do, and I had some questions that I wanted to ask tonight, the right-of-way between Keith Lister and whoever lives where Rennie used to live, do I see that off of Grimes, do you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah, right through here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that still, is that still going to be used as a right-of-way, or?
No, we are not proposing a street there, I guess Bill hasn't really decided what he's going to do with it, right now it's just kind of shown in the outlot of the town blocks, but the plan is to leave it natural the way it is now.
Well, it's, it's still right-of-way, isn't it? I mean, we never vacated it, did we?
It, on the county website, it shows it's owned by Bill Kimberly, not the city. I didn't do any title searches or anything, but that's, that's the way it's been shown.
That's the one, boundary survey, that's what it showed.
Actually, when, back, it showed that back when we were looking at some previous developments called the Pines with Mark Bach instead, it was at that point owned by Mark Bach instead, presumably is, I don't know how it got that way.
I don't either, and I know when we were busy vacating alleys and streets down here in the original part of town, I know there was, individuals up there were very interested in getting that, and they were told, no, we're going to save that in case we ever need to run a road through there. Does that sound familiar to anyone other than me?
I know that it's already lined up as if it was going to be a road.
Yeah. So, it's not in one of the phases of development because of topography, be?
Yeah, I think the original plan maybe that you guys saw, I don't know, a year ago, whatever, showed a road going up through here, but the topography dropped so much that in the end we ended this with cul-de-sac and are leaving this natural, leaving the trees and.
Okay, so that's where I was going, I think, that some of the concern that was brought up with the P and Z, this should help with that.
Correct, yeah, we're leaving those trees and leaving it the way it is today.
So, not as invasive maybe as a development as previous, and I know you weren't involved with those versions, but.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to be mad that it's going, that that's not going to be a road down there, I don't think anybody's going to be mad, but I think they're, after they tried to get it when we did, we did all those vacation, vacated all that ground down there and they weren't able to, and just like them, I'm curious as to how the ownership got to somebody else, what was city.
Behind the properties that are on?
No, no.
Between. 14 East Drive.
Yeah, between the last two houses on Grimes on the south side, if you will.
She's looking it up on the assessor's site.
Well, yeah, that, I mean, if it wasn't back to our property and now is Kimberly through the sale of the entire plant, that, that would, I, I think the net result is a positive, right, whether you maybe ideally would, would like to own it, but if it's not going to be developed, that's not a altogether bad scenario either.
Amy's looking it up on the assessor's site for us.
Is there anything here?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just curious as to how this stuff happens, and I know one of the owners really wanted it, I know he's going to be disappointed.
My predecessor had.
Well, yeah, now you're talking buy it, before, before all they had to pay, it was the paperwork to get it transferred over.
Oh, yeah.
If in fact it was a street, and I don't know if it was ever, if it was ever a street or if it was ever owned by.
Well, the, I mean, just as, for, as a reference, there's part of Graham Street that's technically in a right-of-way easement, but not, but it's owned still by Kimberly, so this plat, when they plat it, will actually dedicate that right-of-way to the city.
See that.
So, I don't know if it was, it's just an easement at one point.
That comes up around the.
Yeah, the assessor's website doesn't go back far enough, we need to, just shows that cotton hyzer Kimberly transaction, that it does show that it's part of the overall property that's owned by him, or by Kimberly Development now, can't tell you from what, on the website.
The office, someone. Just a note.
Yeah, who does, we're going to make a trail connection down through there, and very positive for the city and good to happen, my only question is who's going to pay?
That's part of the conversation that we'll be having Wednesday, part of the conversation will also be that to get this paved at this time, we'll use the commercial side of TIP, not the residential, but the commercial side of TIP to do that.
Okay, and if we're sure the commercial's going to happen.
There's four lots of commercial there, and again, that's why we're having a conversation is how they're phasing, what they're looking at, to make this work, it's almost got to be a partnership.
Yeah, well, I'm not opposed to that, I just don't want to see that, like we're here with a lot of parks now, hey, we're going to have a park here, and then we got a park with nothing, I don't want to say we got a trail here, but trail, there's nothing to the trail.
I understand that.
Well, and that was one other thing that I, again, some of this is going to get so boxy, I'm, I think this plan is as good as we've seen, I think we need to make sure that, you know, I know there's a lot of discussion around the drainage and that seems to be taken care of, but it pops up from time to time, so I want to make sure that's taken care of from, from the shoot, but with respect to the parkland, I know there was some discussion and some good discussion in the P and Z, but there's a required calculation that the state statute law that says you have a X acre development, so you have to dedicate X amount of, and maybe we need to start calling it green space as opposed to parkland, because I feel like we get held to account when a developer, not in this case specifically, says there's parkland over here, the city's going to put a park in, and everybody thinks jungle gym and, and whatever, right, when it's actually just land with a determined purpose, and so, and I think we've been prudent with respect to when we develop them, how we develop them, the money that's spent, and not borrowing to do it or any of those things, but to me, there are multiple purposes, and there was discussion around how usable is the space, and I don't know that there is a ton of usable space in this one, and quite frankly, as a developer, I don't know that it would, you know, behoove me to give my flattest land out as, as parkland space, especially in this case where there does seem to be a great benefit of having the trail connecting here, which will be at cost, you know, whose split, but to me, that is a positive, and it's not a, a negative, and I know there was some discussion, yeah, good discussion, I'm not coming down on anything that was said in the P and Z meeting, but I just, I think it needs to be clarified, and we need to, maybe be, I need to be a little bit more careful with some verbiage here, because I don't blame people buying into a development when they've been told there's going to be a park over there, when we haven't made that determination, and it's dedicated land for some recreational purpose, be that a dog park, a traditional playground, of, you know, whatever, skate park, I mean, everything in between, so.
I don't, I don't disagree with anything you said, but still, having, having said that, that plan becomes, in my mind anyway, becomes more sellable with the fact that there's going to be a trail down.
Absolutely.
Makes it a lot more marketable, but if the trail's there, and we can't afford to have it paved, now, if we can some, come to some kind of agreement and get it done, well, great, but, you know, I've heard it all before.
Right, and getting it done on whose timeframe?
Yeah.
So, if that's something that, as it gets built out over the next handful of years, and we do, you know, four, five, 10 years down the road, whatever, I'm not, just hypothetically, we, on the pace we're going, at the progress we're making, most specifically this year, we'll have built-out parks pretty much in a lot of the neighborhoods that need to have them in a shorter amount of time.
And I'd just like to throw in my two cents worth again, I know I'm a broken record on this, but a trail is not necessarily going to increase the value, matter of fact, it's a deterrent for a lot of people, because they don't want people walking through their backyards, but I guess I'm from a slightly different position where if we don't have the funds available to develop a park, we probably shouldn't be taking people's land in the first place, you know, and.
That's kind of my point exactly.
Yeah, instead of, you know, so if, right, wrong, or indifferent, the government allows us to take people's land, and you know my opinion on that, but if we're at a point where we have overgrown our ability to take care of it or pay for it, maybe we just need to look at not taking any period.
But I, I think under the law, they have the option of giving us an equal amount of cash that we couldn't.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a philosophical argument, because, you know, if I want to go do something to my house, the city's not going to require me to donate something to do it, and I, and I don't think anybody, kind of like you, if you wanted, if you had a chunk of land here in town and develop it, we shouldn't come to you and say, what are you going to give us, I think that's wrong, but that's neither here nor there, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, there's a lot of different ways to look at that, and maybe we shouldn't take anything on if we can.
Well, and I think, I think the other side of that is, is that we've had, over the last several years, a lot of smaller developments done by a number of developers rather than one large development done by one developer, that, that you've got one big, large chunk of ground to get, without all these small individual pieces, and although this is a great conversation to have, it's kind of becoming a moot point, because the amount of buildable property or buildable real estate in Polk City that's left, that isn't going somewhere else, outside of the district at this point, is, we pretty much know where it's at, you know, so what we do moving forward is going to be interesting to see as some of these bigger properties potentially open up down the road.
My, my biggest concern really is, is not matter, is me personally, whether or not we pay for the trail or the developer pays for the trail, but what are we going to do when we have so many parks that, you know, Mike is going to have to have a giant staff, just greens, green space people to keep up with, you know, maybe the city will go and pay for the difference, I don't know, but that's a concern that I have, is long-term, how do we take care of everything we're acquiring?
I want to add one more thing on the trail, because I know that Gary and staff as well have been, I think if there's one piece of this development that's been critical since day one, has been putting a trail in down through here and finding a way to connect Neil Smith, to come back around through, to connect back through Deer Haven, and to get up to East Broadway, and so I know that's really a, a goal here right now, is to make that connection, eventually find a way to get us down, I think we've identified some areas, to get us down, you know, down to Quanis Park, and then continually working to, you know, expand north, so this is a big piece, and I know there's been several different ways that this could run, but I know we've never lost focus of having that trail come down through here, and this is, and this is a big factor.
You have that ability from Pine Ridge to get downtown is huge, just because there is no, no safe way, and people just won't go that way, so there's a, it's a big piece, but to your parks, the discussion we've had, I fully agree, it's, we might afford to be chew at some point, hopefully we can catch up, but the more proactive we can be, the better, I know to Rob's, Rob's points.
Rob's.
To both your points, it may make good points.
It's green space, but it's not necessarily a park.
Not just because I'm getting lumped in with him, but I do have a little bit different, I mean, I, I'm fearful that, and Jason's right, it's a moot point largely, but cash in lieu of land, in my opinion, is a short-term game for a long-term loss, if we have a plan to develop the land that we have, and even newer land that we get, we just have to buck up and deal with the fact that we don't have the money yet to do all of them, and say, here's the plan, we'll get to it, you know, when we get to it, which is a tough conversation to have, but at some point, that land is going to be more valuable, both in terms of financially and benefit to the neighborhood than, than taking the cash upfront, well, so, don't want to belabor this point, because it's way off topic for crossroads, and it's well irrelevant with where we're at, but.
You know, before you get too carried away with my statement, it wasn't, I wasn't saying I advocated that, I just said it was an option.
Right.
It's an option, if they don't want to give us flat land, then give us money, I don't, you know, I, I'm not saying that they should do it.
And I'm not saying it's never a case, because there is a certain dollar amount that does make it appropriate, I'm just using that on a consistent go-forward basis, is I guess what I was, the point I was trying to make.
And the other question I have is, if I may, there are a lot of time spent on drainage down there, big issues, a lot of talk, and, and my question is for Kathleen, if I may, right at that P and Z meeting, you said it doesn't require a full-blown drainage plan?
Not at the preliminary plat stage, it does for construction drawings, which will .
Just not at the time?
Yeah, yeah, right now, we've seen the concept, and we kind of generally understand where the water's coming from, where it's going to, and how it's going to be managed in act, so that it does, it doesn't have a negative impact downstream, but we don't have the flueable and drainage plan, we don't have, pipes aren't sized, none of that kind of thing, so, there are, and there may be some rear yard swales, those kinds of things that we'll, that we'll look at more closely as we get to detail on construction.
And we can talk about parks and trails that were blue in the face, but that is a much bigger issue.
It is, but that was, and watching the meeting, I want, I mean, I want to be careful as well, because drainage is, is past fail, so there, there's little interpretation on our side, say, they come forth with a plan, and as long as everything's accurate, based on the, the amount of land and the slope and all those things, does it meet the requirements to handle the water that would go through that? Yes or no?
Right.
So, in, in P and Z's, recommendation or not recommendation, and our approval or not approval, that's largely irrelevant, it, it meets the requirements or it doesn't.
Right, I mean, at this point, it appears to meet the requirements based on the information we have at this stage, it's, it seems reasonable, and again, we'll look at it more, in more detail as the plans progress.
And I also know you guys are going to be looking at it in really good detail, and I know that this conversation regarding the drainage up here has come up several times, and I trust it'll be checked, double-checked, and triple-checked.
Again, I think it was good discussion, and I'm glad that some of the things, most specifically Dennis brought up in the meeting, were, were brought up at this point, ahead of the game for you.
Right.
But just want to set the table a little further as to how that fits in, and make sure that I'm understanding it correctly.
And there is, I mean, on this particular site, as you can imagine, there's a lot of flow that comes from off-site that will just be passed through, the developer's not required to detain any of those flows, they're just, they're, they're going to be detained for the commercial properties, the town home property, and then they're also going to be making sure that none of the flows are, are any greater on post-development for the single-family too.
Yep, there's a reason that they skipped this area and went out to Pine Ridge to develop rather than doing it here, because of how the land is late, or how, I think, and as prices have risen for land, it becomes a little bit more.
Kevin, you'll turn?
Just to verify what, what you said, you said that, that drainage is irrelevant, that it's an irrelevant argument?
No, what I'm saying is, of the things that are open for our interpretation, and stop me when I make a mistake here, because I will, of the things that are for us to interpret, and for P and Z to recommend for us to interpret, it either meets the requirements or it doesn't from a drainage perspective, what we not solely look at, but what we focus on is, it's like the parkland too, the parkland is a part of the entire development, is, is the, the number of single-family, multifamily, commercial, parkland dedication, as all of this worthwhile as an addition to our community, but the, well, we need to change some things here and there, and from a, from a drainage perspective, it meets the requirements or it doesn't, and that's what I think bites us down the road with some things, is that we have more discussion around than actually warrants the yea or nay, does that make sense? That's what.
Yeah, it all makes sense, but at the end of the day, if people are having water in their basements down there, it doesn't make any sense at all to them.
It's not irrelevant from a how it affects people perspective, but.
Well, I, I guess we have a little, little different opinion, because I think our, part of our job is to look at these things and how, see how they do affect people who are already living there and have been there for quite a while, just my opinion.
I think you've been waiting.
Oh, just my main concern is that it's yet two more ponds that are going to be given to this, given to the city, it's just more financial liability for us, and are we also going to have the dry basin as well, that means we have to do all of the upkeep on what this developer needs to do in order to maintain his drainage, and a pond out there looks kind of nice, it's an amenity that helps him sell stuff, and yet we're taking on the entire financial liability of it, I mean, just look at the pond up in Pine Ridge, all the stuff that's been problems we had up there, whatever, with having to poison out the weeds and.
It's a different curve with that, I think we can manage those, go ahead.
I thought at one point the Parks Commission said, please, no more ponds, we don't want any more ponds being considered parkland, and I thought P and Z also said they don't want any more ponds, and now we just keep getting pond after pond after pond, aren't you sick of taking care of ponds?
Yes.
Legally, I don't think we can, correct me if I'm wrong, legally, I don't think we can determine whether it's green grass or ponds, I think it's just by acres, am I right? In other words, if, if a developer chooses to give us a one-acre pond or a one-acre patch of grass, I don't know that we have any say on that.
You're, you're, go ahead, I mean, just like I said, the ordinance does specifically, when they are calculating the pond, the, the parkland requirement, you, you take out the water area, but I, I mean, I don't.
Right, yeah, I didn't, I didn't, my interpretation was the same as Kathleen, that the, the pond area is not included for purposes of the parkland or recreation, now your ordinance does say recreation to them, to the point that it's expanded, not just park, but, but yeah, that's not included generally.
I will say there are five ponds being proposed on the site, two of them will be privately maintained and owned.
And who maintains and owns those, just out of curiosity, homeowners association?
Homeowners, they go kind of through detention, they're dry autumn, they go through the detention base.
Okay, just wanted to be clear, figured that was the case.
No, that's it. Looking out for pocketbooks.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Otherwise I'd take a motion on item two.
So.
Sargen. Roll call please.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorach.
Yes.
Mordini.
Motion carries, thank you. Item three, part-time administrative assistant for Polk City Police Department, under item three, item A, consider motion to approve the job description, Gary Trace, somebody?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Juggle it, go for it, I didn't know who was doing it, I didn't talk to him.
There's a job description for a part-time administrative assistant for the Polk City Police Department, the person would actually be under the police, but at, at times can be in the regular administration, the job description was made part of the agenda packet and is up for your approval.
Questions on the job description? Take a motion, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I guess I have a question, not necessarily on that job description, but, and this may be looking for needles in the haystack, but is it, does anybody think there's any chance at all that we can align the two positions with, with Jake's leaving and in this position, have somebody to do both, or is that mission impossible?
I can speak to that, but the, the different specific subject matter knowledge of police support clerks they need as far as, I apologize, I'm actually working this right now as well, for tracks, for the state recording system, for ILEEDs, for records management system, for UCR reporting, and for a lot of the specialty knowledge they're going to have, it would be very, very difficult, especially for a part-time position, have anything to do with any type of technological support as well.
Yeah, well, I was, I was thinking more about having it be a full-time position, but somebody that also knows, is that what I see her saying?
I don't know, you know, I, I would, I would guess, to speak for Jake as well, it'd be the same thing on their side.
Sure.
So, I'm not saying that, I mean, I don't, I don't see any way that would work in a 40-hour-a-week job, but.
I figured it out, but I didn't ask, I wanted to.
No, I understand, there's a lot to the, the support position on the long course side of a lot of the, and you, I mean, I'm sure you were, a lot of from, I mean, you had feeling of tracks and the different computer aided dispatching systems that have that knowledge of as well.
Take a motion.
So.
Roll call.
Lee.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeBorach.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Motion carries, item B, consider motion to authorize advertising for the position.
So.
Sargen.
Roll call.
DeBorach. Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Anderson.
No. Item four, motion carries, item four, discuss creation of Polk City Police Department K-9 Study Committee, item A, consider motion to establish PD K-9 Study Committee, I'll throw the floor back to chief.
We want to look at the option of having a, a K-9 unit for the police department, actually very effective, especially for smaller communities, that they have extra force multiplier, extra, not extra officer, but for backup to the officer that's using the dog, and also for search capabilities, we have, my past experience using, finding lost children, walk away from schools, have a care facility here. officer could search an area for something like that. And then also, as an ancillary benefit, you can have the dog trained in narcotics detection as well. All that's kind of going away, the courts are tying law enforcement hands a lot on the use of K-9s for narcotics detection, like in cars, on the roadside anymore. But we wanted to get a study together. My goal with this is to get a well-rounded group of individuals together to look at the viability of it, talk about fundraising for it so it doesn't cost the police department a big chunk of money. And in the end, I would envision four to five meetings before we start really getting to the budget, talks for the following fiscal year in the fall, and be able to come together and see if we're going to recommend, try to afford it something with fundraising. That's where I was at with it.
So looking at both the startup costs as well as ongoing costs.
Correct, yep.
Questions for Trace?
I think there's nothing wrong with forming a committee and looking at this, and we can find out what those things or other questions were asked, and we can at least take a look at it.
One thing I would change, I guess this would go to the next one, but was council had worked, expressed interest in being on the committee as well, but I thought out there, but else.
He likes dogs.
It's a good move, not, hey, that was just my comment. You got to start with liking dogs before you can be a cat.
Like an ankle binder, Dan.
My only question is, who doesn't like dogs?
My dad.
Wow, you said that.
He will, he'll never see this, believe me.
All right, I'll take a motion on A.
So.
Second. Roll call.
DeVorec.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarge.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, mayoral appointments of Councilman Mordini. Can I add DeVorec to this? Does it cause any issues? I can't, or it doesn't prompt?
You can.
No way, all right.
Don't be intentional, Stowe.
No problem, you can.
Yeah, all right. Councilman DeVorec, Matt Aker, Lindsey Williams, Josh McLean, and Alyssa Conard to the Polk City Police Department K-9 Study Committee. I'll take a motion.
Does that need a motion?
Does I need a motion if I'm appointed?
I think you got it set up that way, don't you?
It just says mayoral appointments.
No, you wouldn't need to.
And I don't need one, I'm just appointing that candidate. Look at that one little power move I got today. And if nobody knows who Alyssa Conard is, she is president of the Polk City Department, and I think that, I appreciate you reaching out to some other organization and.
I agree with you. I'm excited.
I think that's good.
You're her person.
Yep.
Did you want a picture of that?
I'll have plenty of opportunities. Item five, consider motion, did you see I'm not plastic bags in, Rob? Just, just check. Item five, consider motion to approve third reading of ordinance 2017-400, amending Chapter 18, City Clerk, Section 18.05, publication two, matter of publication. Take a motion.
Looking to approve ordinance 2017-400.
Second. Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
DeVorec.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarge.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, mayor's report, couple of quick things, and I know Rob will probably speak to this, but I want to publicly congratulate Megan Griffith with P and M, who was awarded Business Person of the Year this year, and Dave Heisterkamp, who was awarded Citizen of the Year. Both of these people were selected by an appointed group from the chamber, and I know they were officially presented their plaques last Thursday night at the prom that was held at TCI. I unfortunately had another commitment, was unable to go, and I appreciate Councilman Sarge going on my behalf and speaking, and I'm sure he got his picture taken up there too, so.
Half as many times.
Yeah, whatever. Speaking of the chamber, I'd like to, in case you're not seeing, they've been doing business after hours, trying to do them once a month. They're doing one May 2nd, I just got an email on that today. If you haven't had a chance to go to it, I'd recommend it. They're doing one on May 2nd from 4:30 to 6:30. There's a lot of good people, just business people in town, and good opportunity to get out and see people, so if you get a chance to go, I'd encourage it. Unfortunately, Dan is not here. I wanted to recognize Dan in the fire department for a, they had a save, and I will make sure to publicly thank him, but gentleman who probably shouldn't be here today, it was a matter of timing, and I know he is home, he was, made it home on Friday, and according to a couple of people, they shocked him five different times on the way down to the hospital, and that never happens, and he's still here to speak to it. So, close family friend, and I'm glad he's back home. And lastly, found out that Senator Ernst will be having her annual ride through Polk City on Saturday, June 3rd. That's her roasting ride, will be leaving Big Barn Harley-Davidson down to Des Moines and heading up to the Boone area up there. They came through here a couple of years ago, and it was pretty impressive. There was several thousand people that rolled through town for about 15 minutes and pretty much shut downtown, so I know staff will be working to do it, and appreciate Public Works in advance getting the town all spiffied up for all the media trucks that'll be coming through, Mike. Why can't our mayor has a motorcycle, I think he'd be good on that ride. Anyway, I'm just letting you know that in case you're around, it's a good, it's a good opportunity, so. That's all I have, Mr. DeVorec.
I would like to also thank Jake for his, the last several years he's been with us, and the growth that he's brought to our non-existent to now fully functional IT portion, the technology portion, the media, and wish you and your family the best, move forward, and really appreciate your time getting this thing going because now it's more beast than ever, so give me miss, big shoes to fill, but appreciate it. That's all I got.
Mordini? I echo Dave's thoughts. I'll save all the words, but he said it better than I, so ditto, as they say. The second thing is, I received a call from a residence on Hanson Place, and admittedly don't know everything about the project years ago, but at some point, it was my understanding that there was some elevation changes and Rock put in the things to deal with drainage down there, and that was changed or changed back, or I'd have to look back, I don't, I honestly don't recall everything that was done there. But they said they've been experiencing some water issues, water stacking down there, and I was checking to see if we can look at that, and I can give you the address and stuff later, but maybe see if there's something that can be done. I meant to bring it up earlier, I'm completely blank, so I'm sorry to throw that out to the last one.
I might, I live on Hanson Place.
You're about two houses from you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to think.
Maybe we could, I don't know what, I don't know what can be done, but I'm hoping there's something. Rob?
Congrats, Jake. Certainly bittersweet for us, but very happy for you. Let's try and cram as many questions in. How long do I got before I can't ask?
Four days.
No, in all seriousness, it, very happy for you, Jake, and hope that goes well for you. As Jason mentioned, me and half the chamber event was neat, Dave, and, and I didn't know Megan before, but it was a good story that, you know, the business on the square, she was very proud and very deserving of that award, but had the P and M of P and M there, which are her grandparents, so I think very proud for her family and neat thing that, again, the thriving business on the square and, and folks that have been around for a long time and do a lot of good work, so congratulations to all involved there, and that's all I have.
Question?
I want to also thank Jake for all of his quick answers to the questions I've shot his way over the years. Going to miss being able to do that, but hopefully we'll have somebody that will come close to your customer service, so. Other than that, I was at the pedestrian bicycle roundtable last Tuesday, and all these people were talking about all their mayor rides they were having through their town. Got around toward me, and I really couldn't say much of anything, so. Just kind of throw that out there, that might be something we might want to consider in the future.
Welcome to the club. Wore some biking shorts to.
I would ask staff to look into what it would take.
Get some non-zoom lenses.
And just throw out there that May is bicycle month, so.
Thanks. It's a great idea, Dan, thank you.
That's it. Give me the committee all volunteer.
I'm getting off this side here, going to you.
I too would like to thank Jake, especially for his patience in dealing with old people that don't understand technology, which will remain nameless. And appreciate Mr. Mordini's comments about, I, I am quite familiar with those trips down there. I was probably down there four or five times, talking with those neighbors and the things that they did to prevent their yards from getting washed away, and that's why I always ask questions about drainage and, you know, no offense to slater engineering, but we got all these approvals and meets everything that's supposed to, supposed to be done, but we still have it. I ask P and Z to make a request to change some ordinances, and some of the ordinance would be that we can't develop right on these waterways, that we do like some other communities and keep houses back from waterways and, and tree replacement ordinances, and I would, I definitely want to see that happen, and so does the P and Z. It was something of both of those things were in the comprehensive plan, when the comprehensive plan was drawn up, and I think it's something we need to just not let slip through the cracks. That's, that's all I have.
I agree with you. Chris Appen.
Anything else for council discussion? City administrator's report?
Thanks, Mayor. Just as a matter of letting council know that on April 17th, one week ago today, Pine Ridge Island LLC was given a letter of non-compliance on the Pine Ridge Island. That's the 30-day that is written in our easement, and that 30 days will be up May 17th. The Davis Street had a public information meeting, quite a bit was learned on that. Engineering is looking at those items that were addressed to engineering staff as well as city staff. We are looking at a May 9th meeting to present the, the project and how we see this moving forward with the paving and the drainage in that area. P and Z also talked about a joint meeting with city council on complete streets. I had a meeting with MPO staff who would like to facilitate that meeting, and if council is interested, we would have a work session, a joint work session with P and Z and city council on June 12th at 5:30 PM.
Question?
We wish that day.
Yep. Need to happen.
Sounds good. Anything else?
That's all I have, sir.
Attorney's report?
Nothing here.
Engineers report?
Nothing.
Public works?
Yes. Couple things first before we get to the actual agenda. Water main flushing was completed last week, it went fairly smooth, so that's done and over with. We did some height or flow testing also in some areas that were, that we needed to get that information, so we got that done. Tree sweeping started today, it'll be completed tomorrow. And the brush pile, it's getting pretty big out there, I wanted to bring it to your attention. The company that we're using, their machine is broke, it's been broke for a while, they say we're first online, but the brush pile, we had this set up for a month ago, and they still don't have it complete, but we're assured that when they have it fixed in the next couple, three weeks, that we are the first ones online. So it is getting big, we understand that. We didn't like this any more than they like, you know, repairing their equipment, so just in case anybody asks, that's why it's, there's that much out there right now. So we'll be dealing with that. Onto the, the actual agenda. I wanted to put in front of you folks the, the items that we pulled from the 2016 street project, put it back on at least out there for you to look at and consider. There's four of them that we pulled from that because we wanted to stay under budget at that point in time, and we did get some good numbers on, on that contract, so I wanted to pull this forward to see if you would entertain it. We did add one. The one is, that we added is on Second Van Dorn over here on the town square, not only for vehicle traffic, it's interrupting, I guess, also for Four Seasons Festival, it's right where people are walking, that type of thing, and it's, it's really loose ground up asphalt that we need to, you know, replace. So that one has to pull, actually. The other reason I consider bringing this forward is because this, this winter was good on the roads, just like, you know, salt, sand, all that, we saved money on most aspects of it, but we did not have to do the repairs this spring, curb damage, asphalt damage, we haven't done any asphalt repairs from frost boils, those type of things, so we have a little bit extra there that we can consider using towards this. So I put out a memo, I just want to put it out there, I'd like to get it in the street project, there's still time to do that if we move forward.
Count's thoughts?
That will have to come next week. At the next one, this is just getting you up to speed. If there's any of these that you don't want in, let us know. If you want us to proceed, we will be bringing back the appropriate paperwork to accomplish this.
Okay, because it's on the, it's on the agenda as possible additions, so.
Would give you enough, that give you enough information to know.
We can take a motion and go.
Discuss and go with it if you choose to do so tonight.
Fantastic. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Roll call.
DeVorec.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarge.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks, Mike. Anything else, Mike?
No.
One, one last thing, you sure you can't drag out that fire hydrant flushing a little longer? I've used that for a week for not having to laundry.
Okay. You can say whatever you want to say.
No, we don't like doing it.
Jake, it's your time to shine.
Well, basically, just wanted to say, thank all of you guys. Past eight years has been amazing working with everybody. I can't think of a better place to have worked over the past eight years, and better people who have worked alongside. Aside from that, I'm definitely going to be missing you guys.
You'll come back and see us. You already told me that.
Just like a developer, you get up there and lie to us.
I'm glad you said that.
You can help.
Thanks, Jake.
Yeah, thanks, Jake. Fire department report? Police department report?
Do you have any questions on the report submitted?
Hope I really liked it.
Looks good.
I, I like the incident reports, not only, they just good nonfiction for you.
They're really like format okay, but kind of, and I got to be honest, Lieutenant said he was a lion's share of that. I used to do the same thing at my previous department, and I kind of told him how I did it, and so he's, but he's tweaked that and, and then submits it to me, and then we send it on, but.
Just, I really like it.
The only thing, I was just going to echo everybody's stuff, information that they said about Jake, and I'd like to thank you guys as well, the police department, we were just talking about David, me and the officers, how far the departments came in the last nine or 10 months, and I just want to thank everybody on the council, and Mayor Gary's helped with that, and also with Jake, he has been playing a huge part in that, you know, so where we're up to where we can integrate with all of the other agencies around us and be able to be on a same technological level with them, so he will be missed in that aspect. He's probably, I would probably say, police department's one of the main reasons, he was probably looking for another job.
Hey, Chief, I do have one question on this disposal, all this stuff you're getting rid of.
Yep.
Where does that go?
So.
Will you use like one of the auction-type things, or is that kind of just?
No, if there's anything I can sell to other departments I know that they can use, most of it, I mean, we're not the whole, I mean.
Yeah, I, yeah, look through your list, yeah, yeah.
It's, there's nothing on there that I can buy. Honestly, I don't believe I'll be able to sell any of them, but I'll try.
Okay.
No, if there's anything I can sell, the other departments I know that they can use, most of it, I mean, we're not the whole, I mean.
Yeah, I looked through your list, yeah.
They're dumping on me, honestly, I don't believe I'll be able to sell any of them, but I'll try. Second would be donation to small departments that could utilize it on older vehicles or fire departments could use it over light bars or something like that. Anything else? And once we start doing our demo for, if we get the remodel going through, it'll just go on the dumpster.
That was kind of where I was going with that, because I just know that sometimes there's smaller departments and some of this stuff is.
Yep.
On the end junk, you know?
So we're just going to throw them in a dumpster, don't we be a little bit more socially conscious than that?
Anything that has to be disposed of, we'll do that appropriately.
We can talk afterwards, too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking like, a lot of the stuff is just pieces of steel.
Yeah. Okay, well, yeah, but a lot of the things that was on that list were electronics.
I think overall, I try to be able to donate, that's why, I hope the lion's share of this stuff goes. So if I don't know until I have third, fourth smaller agencies that express interest at chief's meeting to come look through it and see what they can utilize. I'm only sure things just will go properly.
Thanks, I'm just curious where it's going. Library report? We'll make special motion that the library director's position was filled. We did acknowledge that appointment tonight on the act of items, so welcome to Jamie Noack. I know that, I appreciate the library board's work and diligence on that whole thing.
Mentioned that all last meeting.
About Jamie, oh, that's right, you did, I apologize about that.
That's quite all right.
Yeah, I forget, since it was here, I officially.
Well, yeah, well, she had more hurdles to.
Yeah, yeah. Neighborhood Citizens Group. Item 12, consider motion enter closed session under chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa. I'd take a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Lane?